September 14th, meeting in the Macon County Board of Commissioners to order. I'd like to welcome all of you in attendance. First item up on our agenda are announcements of the announcements of the measure.
Just reminder that due week we will be enjoying the Macon County Fair, as far as we know now. Angel, and we're looking for a good turnout and a lot of participation. Thank you, Commissioner.
Sounds good. Anything else? All right, if we'll all rise, let's observe one with silence, and I want to ask Commissioner Hickman to lead us in the flag. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our strong.
Thank you, sir. All right, I want to call our public hearing to order regarding the community transportation program application. Ms. Kim Angel, our transit director is here. Welcome, Kim.
Well, another year has rolled around.
Oh, my gosh.
It is time to be looking at the next fiscal year's grant cycles from FTA funnel through the Public Transportation Division of NCPOT. I believe you have a resolution before you, but after this public hearing, if you so desire, pass that resolution so we can apply for that funding. And I think Robbie had asked, I don't think you might have signed up to speak.
No one's to speak.
So I can go just real quickly. There are three grant applications, administrative, capital, and 5310 operating. Total administrative will be $208,827. Local share is 15% on that, which is $31,325. Capital, now, this is impressive, only $24,000 for next year because for the first year in several years, we do, we will not be replacing a vehicle. Of course, we have seven in our fleet this year, so we're kind of caught up for a year, so get a little bit of a reprieve in buying new vehicles. That $24,000 represents tablets, new tablets to go in the vehicles that the drivers use. That's how they get their manifests. And there's also replacements for four of the computers in our office, and that's based on the county's replacement schedule. So for that $24,244, the match is going to be $2,425, 10% match. And last will be the 5310 operating. We are asking again for $165,000. There's a 50% match on that. The good news is our rope funding has been restored in the North Carolina General Assembly. Well, I shouldn't say it has been restored. We believe it is going to be restored when the budget is passed this year and again for next year. So of that $82,500, this year we're expecting $72,029. No reason to believe that we won't get that same amount next year unless there is a budget cut for some unknown reason. So if you look at the total cost, it's $398,071 for grants, and if you take the $72,000 in what we will use for match from the rope money, the matching funds from county funds would be $44,221, based on these grants.
Thank you.
Is that in your budget?
Yeah, this is for next year's budget. It will be in the budget for 2023.
Somebody will.
Somebody will.
Is there anyone here in the public that would like to speak regarding 5311? Anybody like to speak regarding combined capital? Anybody like to speak regarding 5310? Any other further questions? Kim, okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll make a vote on it, I guess. Is it good? Anything else to miss? Anything? Took me seven, six years now?
It did, and just a little bit of coaching, just a little bit of a reminder.
Thank you for helping me keep things. All right. Last chance, anybody want to speak? All right, we're going to close the public hearing. I guess we can take immediate action on this, and we'll get a motion to approve. Let's take them each individual at 5311.
The resolution is actually a combined resolution.
It's a combined one, perfect.
So we only need a motion and a second.
In terms of how I make the motion, we pass the resolution, the public transportation program resolution, fiscal year 2023.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bill, seconded by Commissioner Shields, all in favor, signified by S.A. 9, raising your hand.
Aha.
Thank you. Thank you. As the board members are aware, this will be Miss Angel's last appearance before this board as the transit director. Sir, I think you said next week is your...
Next Friday is my last day, having served as the best and worst transit director so far. So nobody will ever get to say that again. It has certainly been my pleasure to serve our residents and citizens here in Macon County, and I have, I have grown up here. But I have been offered a really good opportunity to run a regional transit system that consists of four counties. I'll be moving to Hickory in a couple of weeks, and on to that, that next adventure. There, there are components of the public transit that I have not had experience in and that's what gave me that experience.
This, this county will definitely miss you, but I don't think anybody up here would ever fault you for trying to improve yourself, so congratulations on that. I don't think there's anybody up here that would disagree with the statement that you were always welcome home when you're ready.
Absolutely.
So come back if you don't like it.
I indicated to Mr. Rowland that, that there were certain stipulations that I'd be glad to come home in a few years, too. So...
Thank you.
We'll see how this salary study goes. Maybe, maybe there'll be some things that'll be much more enticing at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim, for everything. See you later.
All right. We'll open up our public comment period. First up, we have Mr. Robert Cook regarding incoming sheriff's salary proposal. Welcome, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, sir. I have a copy of this. Sorry, I ran out, Mr. Brendan. First, I'd like to thank you for having me, or letting me have an opportunity to speak. As you know, sheriff, the sheriff has decided to retire at the completion of his current term. He has earned his retirement, and I wish him good luck in his future endeavors. He is one of about three sheriffs in the state of North Carolina that have actually ended up with his 20 years as a sheriff, and he has earned that, that pay. And his salary rightfully reflects that service. I'm here tonight not about his pay, but the incoming sheriff's pay, whomever that may be. According to the North Carolina General Statute, GS 153A-92, the incoming sheriff shall be paid at the same rate as the outgoing sheriff unless there is a resolution by the county commissioners to reduce that pay. That's why I'm here tonight. That resolution must be made no later than 14 days before the file, the last filing day of the Office of the Sheriff. And as I've said, Sheriff Holland has earned his pay, and I personally do not, but I personally do not think that it's appropriate for the new sheriff with zero experience as a sheriff to start out the same rate of pay as one whose pay has increased over 20 years of dedicated service. According to the Macon County pay scales, the sheriff's pay range is 73958 to 110937. As of 2019, according to public records that I was able to find, Sheriff Holland's pay was approximately $101,000, and maybe more now. Conversely, the average deputy in Macon County is paid around $34,000 a year. According to my research, as you can see, I've done North Carolina populations in order as of 2021, and you see Macon County falls, as far as population goes, in number, number five position. And I've also done this, the, the same research on the numbers, the salary for sheriffs, and Macon County's, in 2019 sheriff salaries falls in number four. Western North Carolina salaries comparison with similar populations, Macon County is number three. As you can see, the western, most northern, North Carolina sheriff salaries, they are, for the most part substantially different than Macon County sheriff. As you can see, the sheriff's salary is in line with other counties of similar size and population served. It's also in line with those across the state of North Carolina. The average salary for all sheriffs in North Carolina is about $105,000. Macon County sheriff's salary is significantly higher than other westernmost counties. When compared to his pay, it is more towards the top end of the range indicated, and that's due to his years of service, which I said he's earned. My recommendation to you is to reduce the incoming sheriff's salary to an amount that is equal to the lowest range that is advertised on your website, and that's around 739, or no more than 15% higher than the chief deputy's pay, whichever is less. I would also recommend that the top end be no more than $100,000, as opposed to the current 110, excuse me, 1109. I feel this is more in line with other departments of comparable size and population service. Much like our current deputies, unless the new sheriff is able to remain in office for 20 years, his ability to reach even the mid-range should be difficult. I would actually be concerned if his, if his pay rose at a pace faster than that's realized by the other deputies. Currently, our deputies generally do not reach their mid, the mid-salary range of their promised salary, and therefore the sheriff should not, I don't believe either. As a matter of fact, if, I would, I would recommend, or I'm sorry, finally, I, I request that the money that's, that's saved from that reduction between the top salary of the sheriff's salary and what, what I recommend it be, I would recommend, or I would request that that sound, that that difference be split among the sheriff's deputies, sergeant below. This is a budget-neutral proposal. It's not going to raise it or lower it, but it is going to give the deputies at least a small, little, those deputies that need it the most, a little bit of a pay raise. And our deputies' pay needs to be competitive with others. Now, you guys have heard this a lot, a number of times, but it needs to be competitive with other departments. And the only way we can do that is to pay them. And, and that's the only way we're going to be able to attract the best and the brightest. And I would also point out, like I said, that this proposal is budget-neutral. So I don't see a downside to it at all, unless, of course, you're the incoming sheriff and you're taking a lot less pay. But I think that we're not taking this job, and I'm sure Sheriff Holland didn't take this job, to, to get rich off of. And I think that we should be at least in line with, with other westernmost counties. And I think that, that this proposal would go a long ways towards helping the deputies on the street. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dylan Castle, accountability. Welcome, Dylan.
I'm trying to keep it to the five minutes. I am a pastor and a preacher, so I'm used to going long on my own account, but this is not the house of God, and it's not my pulpit, so I can't do that. So I'm a young man, I'm, I'll turn 28 this month, and I grew up in a conservative Christian home, right here in Macon County in Franklin, and never really got involved in politics or anything really overly politically community-involved, aside from church events, youth group events, sporting events, those types of normal things, but nothing on the political level. Most of this was because I was raised the way most conservative kids were raised in my age. We care about the president, we care about federal things, but everything else that falls down below doesn't seem to get an importance. You can blame that on the parents if you want, but that's how I was raised, and that's how a lot of my peers were raised. As I grew older, I understood the importance. My, my family is a military family, my parents both retired Air Force, so that flag means almost more than anything to me, aside from my salvation, my family, my wife, things like that. And so because of that, I really started to focus on what our country is all about and what that means here locally as well. I was kind of forced into learning more than I even wanted to learn because I was a high school government teacher for a little bit, and so I had to learn, that was not my specialty. Bible was my specialty, if you can call, you know, a specialist in Bible. And so I had to learn very quickly what, what politics and government was really all about. And it's a shame that so many conservatives are so quiet. And I'm just going to assume that the majority of you would probably consider yourself a conservative. Doesn't matter to me if you would or not, but that's what I'm going to assume. And so with, I just wrote accountability. All I'm here, is this my first time here, meeting with you, seeing you face-to-face this close. I'm just here to let you know that I would say I represent a large majority of people who are tired of the direction that not only our country, but our state, and yes, even our county and our city are going in. My concern is that our county is going to turn into what our state has turned into, which is what our federal system has turned into. The difference is I can stand here tonight, and I can see you, and I can look each one of you in the eye, and I can tell you that your seat won't last forever. And the voters of Macon County asked you to come in here and to do a job. I'm not saying you haven't done that job, but I'm warning you that we've asked you to come do a job for us. I didn't vote, and those who voted didn't vote to ask me to do what the CDC thinks is best. I'm not saying to ignore the CDC. I'm telling you that we elected you. I didn't get to elect the CDC. I didn't get to elect our, our Director of Health, or whatever you call the person that runs the Health Department over there. I didn't get to elect them, you appoint them, but I did elect you. And so I'm just here as a, as a cautious reminder, as the first time me being here, but I promise I'll be coming back, that, again, your, your seats are up for election, some now, some in a couple of years. Do, do what the community would like for you to do. Don't be afraid to take that stand, we're willing to back you. I can assure you, the citizens of Macon County are willing to back you when you do what is right, what is morally acceptable. The, this idea that somehow we're going to let unrighteous people stand for righteousness' sake is absurd.
Yes, it is.
But this county, I believe, is a righteous county, filled with righteous people, and I would hope that you would consider yourself righteous men. So you have to make those righteous decisions, not the unrighteous decisions. That's what our county wants. Now, I could be wrong, but I think we all know if I am or not. And so I just simply ask you to take this into consideration. I don't plan to come in here and pick a fight and argue. I respect you as men who are wiser and older than I am, who have experience and knowledge that I don't have or don't understand, but at the same time, we're still peers. We're citizens of Macon County, we're citizens of North Carolina, we're citizens of the United States of America. And all of that needs to be a reminder. These budgets and these proposals and all these things that come before you, it's easy for you to, to kind of lose track of really the heart and soul of what's going on. Each one of you understand, the little bit I know of your backgrounds, I know you understand generational importance. The founders of our country, and I would say even the founders of our state and our county, understood decades and even hundreds of years down the road. Most politicians today are making decisions based upon their time in office. So I'm just begging you not to be those men, I'm imploring you to be righteous men, filled of character, and what is right. And all else fails, the citizens of Macon County will ultimately get to decide. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir.
I just started a house church, but we're called Freedom New Covenant Church. I was forming it.
What?
Freedom New Covenant Church.
Freedom New Covenant.
Well, like I said, we just started this first year. I was a youth pastor at a, a local church in Silva, and God moved, my heart moved me and my wife to open up a church. And so we're meeting in my house and then a house over in Silva for some that are over in that direction.
Good luck.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak?
Can you set your name for the record, please? Yes, Tracy Dogen. And I'm here to follow up on what I first brought to your attention back in February about animal control ordinances. And then I was passed to the planning board, and then the planning board passed me to the Board of Health, and I've been with the Board of Health since May, trying to get the revisions that I first attempted to get here. And they formed a committee to, what they told me was to make the revisions that I proposed and then present them to you. It seems like the Board of Health does not see themselves as in charge of animal control program, even though in the ordinances it states that they're in charge of the animal control program. And I'm having a hard time getting these revisions done for the animals. And I'm also here because at the last Board of Health meeting, Jimmy Villard was the only one who did some research on the animal control ordinances. And he, he did not make the revisions, but he proposed some new laws, which he was going to present to you all for entry. And I'm very much against the new proposals because I believe they will harm animals, and I have letters and petition signatures in opposition of what he's proposing. I just wanted to be here to state that there is opposition, and we don't want those new laws entered, but we do want revisions that'll help animals. And the second thing is, there's been an argument over reporting to animal control can be anonymous or non-anonym, anonymous. I had a retired judge and lawyer who also, you know, used to do legal map practice, he understands the law very well, read the North Carolina statutes and ordinances, and wrote a statement saying that as the law stands, our ordinances say that the reports can be anonymous. And that is a big deal here in Macon County because there's lots of animals being kept in backyard, tied up, and horses that are just skeletons. And if, a lot of these people who want to call in anonymous, they, they have to, they can't give their name because they've already had run-ins with their neighbors. There are always neighbors who are going to see these animals, or the ones that care enough to call in and can't afford problems with these people, so they, it's important that we uphold anonymity to reporting animal abuse or neglect. Neglect and abuse falls under cruelty, and there's too many animals that are visible and right now in Macon County, and nothing's being done about it. People who have called in, including myself, they go out there and they say there's nothing they can do. And these, and the horse, and goat, and dog that I called in, the horse was almost dead. I was able to purchase him, so he just barely made it. And the goat, I believe, died, and the dog still suffers. And there's nothing, they don't do an investigation, they just talk to the person, and the person says, oh, yeah, I'll do, you know, I'll put a shelter up. And they never do, and there's no follow-up. We need help with our animal control program. We really do. We need this decided and cleared up and, you know, just ran properly. It's not being run properly, and no one wants to take charge. You know, like I said, I was passed around quite a bit before coming back to you because I'm told that you are the ones to enter the laws. I know you did sign the last amendments to the ordinances, so I can forward to you the revisions again that I was proposing, the statement on reporting being anonymous, and anything else you want, if that'll help. But that's what I'm here for. I just don't want the new proposals entered and help for these animals. Tell me what I need to do to get...
It would be helpful to me if you could forward those to the, what you had in February, back to the county manager, and he will see that we get them.
Okay.
And then whenever Mr., whenever he comes, the health director's here now, she might be able to answer some little questions, so...
Okay. All right. So if I'm going to forward them to the county manager and y'all look at them?
You'll get them.
Okay. And then maybe make a meeting about it?
All right. I think, too, as Ms. Dugan said, that this has came before this board, and that there's channels in place to, to look at these things, to review these things. This board has then directed this ordinance to get passed through those channels, and I think until such time as we've heard back from those channels that we've passed this along to, I think this board taking any action will be premature. I don't know. Again, you know, I would anticipate that when the Health Department completes their, the Health Board completes their review, if, if they saw fit after, after taking not only Ms. Dugan's concerns, but, but concerns overall regarding the whole ordinance, and they have had time to digest that and discuss those, I think at that time is when this board should consider that. And of course, if Ms. Dugan has give her concerns to the Health Board, that would have been the appropriate place to, to give them.
But they, the Health Board at the last meeting, they totally disregard, regarded all the concerns and sides. And so they said they're going to make their proposals to the county commissioners.
Well, and I would assume that, you know, did you submit them to them?
Yeah.
Okay.
They have everything.
They were, okay, so they, they have taken those and they had considered them, and I think, you know, that at such time when they come and present, that I'm sure they will, if they have disregarded them, they'll, they'll articulate it as to why, or why they did not put them in there, or why they did put them in there, or why they, they chose maybe to omit them, you know. But once they pass the ordinance back, it'll still have to be reviewed by, by legal counsel to be sure that it's in compliance with state law, and there's still quite a few more steps in the process before, that any changes that are, that are recommended actually become law.
Okay, but like, how do I find out when they're being presented?
It will be advertised, just like this meeting, there'll be an agenda that goes out, and it will, you know, it will have on new business discussion regarding proposed revisions to the animal control ordinance. Our agendas are sent out to all media outlets, as well as posted on our website in advance of the meetings.
Okay. Do we ever, we, the public, have time to talk, discuss the proposals?
Absolutely. There will be, before an ordinance can be adopted, there must be a public hearing, at which time anybody that has concerns to that ordinance will be able to come, and they'll have had time. You can't adopt, it will have to first be presented to the board, and then in a later meeting, a public hearing must be held.
Okay.
So that is the built-in to give the public time to review them.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Dugan, you want your cards with you?
Um, yes, I'm a person.
I'll contact you when, who gets the information, and I'll tell you when it's on the list. If you want to meet for a card.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Public comment, want to address the board? One once, one twice? All right, we'll move on to additions to the agenda. I have one item. Got a letter from Pine Grove School Community Club, I think, that we need to discuss. Let's put that at the end of new business, so maybe, let's put it as 11F. Actually, let's put it at 11E because 11E will be removed. I had received a text just before the meeting as I was driving down the mountain from Representative Gillespie, our resolution for the consideration to keep one of our North Carolina Wildlife, Wildlife Resource Officers in Macon County has been accepted, and he's going to remain here. So we don't need that resolution now, so we'll take it off. But Eric, fantastic resolution, great job. And I was really looking forward to passing that because I, I thought it had some very valid and good points, but...
I have to take it off.
Sounds like we were successful without your help. So let's remove item 11E and replace 11E with the Pine Grove School Community Club. Other items?
Uh, 11A, I'd like to have that removed, so I'm looking forward to it.
All right, move 11A.
Mr. Chairman, could we replace 11A with discussion concerning Macon Middle School
Mr. Chairman, could we replace 11A with discussion concerning Macon Middle School locker room facility?
Yes, sir. Be a good place for that.
Is it October 12th?
I don't know, October something, I'm not sure the exact day.
That's great.
12. 12, yeah. Mr. Manager, anything else?
Yes, we do need to add an item under appointments, 13A. We'll be making an appointment to the watershed review board.
Okay. Anything else? Commissioner Shields, Commissioner Bell, Commissioner Young, Commissioner Higdon?
Continue discussing that discussion on that Hill Community Building.
All right, let's put that under Old Business, since we've been there. Item is...
Really Old Business.
10B.
And you can remove... Well, it's already removed. Oh yeah, 10A. I don't have any, I'm researching that, so we're not prepared for discussion on that tonight. Discussion regarding electoral districts.
You must have, you got the wrong agenda.
Huh?
You got last month's agenda.
Last one did just come out.
August.
Well, if it's on there, let's take it off. The first five or six are the same. I'm living in another world.
Lots of money.
It's the government, it all runs together.
All right. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda with the set adjustments? Got a motion by Commissioner Shields, second by Commissioner Young, all in favor? All right, reports and presentations, COVID update, Kathy McGah, Public Health Director, welcome Kathy.
Good evening.
Hello, hello.
Hello. So we're here to give an update on COVID. We are, as Mike Sprayberry said, day 553 of the COVID-19 outbreak, week 79. So we have been in this for quite a while. The numbers today, we've got 395 active positive individuals in the county. We've had sadly 54 deaths. We've had several over the last couple of weeks, and it's been really tough. Our current fatality rate is 1.2%, which is still somewhat lower than the state or the nation, but it's hard to see that number, no matter what it is. We have a positivity rate of 26.53 over a rolling seven-day period, so for...
Is that the highest ever?
No, it's been higher, but that's what it is as of yesterday. And our case rate is 775 per 100,000 population, so that allows us to be comparable, which, you know, we're seeing the same trends that the rest of the state is seeing and the rest of the nation is seeing. Macon County tends to be about two weeks behind when a wave of cases start, and, you know, two weeks behind seeing that wave come to conclusion. So right now, we're in our fourth wave that we've seen. We saw one initially last year in about around May. We saw one beginning of school last year. We saw one right around Christmas time get started, and of course, this is our fourth wave. This has been, we're in week eight, it looks like, of this wave. And, you know, we're somewhat hopeful because we see that the state and the nation have their hinting at a plateau of this particular variant wave, which is the Delta variant. And again, you know, we may be about two weeks behind, but they are seeing somewhat of a plateau, and we're hoping that that comes to fruition here. It has been a long wave. The case wave around Christmas time in total was about eight weeks. So we're seeing, right now, we're seeing the rise happen over an eight-week period, and then we'll look to see that it falls over an eight-week period. So it's quite a lengthy case wave. Our hospitalizations as of today in Western North Carolina region, 84% of the ICU beds are occupied. We're seeing about two-thirds of total beds being occupied, but ICU beds particularly are right around 84%. And that's for the entire region, so all hospitals in this region.
Who is taking patients now? Is there more Mission on one taking anybody? I know Seal was not, Hayden was not.
You know, that's a, that tends to change because as people are discharged or moved to Mission, they have a bed open up, so that really changes pretty frequently. It's a constant moving target, really. There, I know that there, you know, when there's somebody that needs to be admitted, it's a task to get somebody in an ICU bed. If you're being admitted for something other than COVID, it's a task getting you admitted to an ICU bed. Of course, you know, even having the staff to cover those beds is a struggle. So it's hurting, it's hurting the hospital systems, it's hurting healthcare all over, and we're no different. It's hurting us here. We're not seeing that vaccine demand reflect the case numbers, which we had hoped. Where you're seeing the case numbers go up, our vaccine demand is just pretty much leveled off and is flat. So as of today, the state is showing us at 57% of our population being vaccinated with at least one shot, and 52% fully vaccinated, considered fully vaccinated. So I have a problem personally with that number because I know that our seasonal population skews that to some degree. So I think if you're looking at our year-round population, you wouldn't see that high of a percentage. And we have some ways to go to get people vaccinated.
How about booster shots? Are you able to do this now, or is that, are we waiting on higher approval, like the guidance?
Yeah. And I'll get to that in just a minute.
What about the monoclonal antibody treatment? I don't know how to pronounce it. Can we set up some kind of center here, maybe to help the ICU?
Well, there's particular needs that you would have to have, and we just don't have the capacity. I mean, we are literally leading staff. I mean, out of 63 positions, we have 15 vacancies, and it's, we're struggling to maintain that. Those monoclonal antibodies require, you know, there's a certain set of equipment that, and the state has really just come out with their standing order for that process.
Is there like a certain region, maybe we could refer patients to, that, you know, I've heard Clay County's offering it.
Yes, they are.
Maybe Graham County. Like, are we able to supplement?
Graham County, I don't think is, but Clay County has gotten...
Like, can we take advantage of that as a...
Yeah, I mean, any, it's not residence-based, so anybody from this area can go to Clay County and get those services. That's something that state did do, is you don't have to like just go to your own county, you can go anywhere in the state and get the service that you need.
Is Clay County set up under the health department's guidance?
I'm not 100% sure about that. I know we've talked about it, but I don't know if they're running it, or if they've contracted with somebody, or if, you know, I'm not sure what they've got in Clay County.
I mean, Clay County can do it. I mean, I'm not trying to throw load on the health department, but what are our options as far as offering that?
I'd have to investigate getting those here. I mean, it'd have to be an outside agency.
It's serious stuff, you know, so they live with, so if we have to back up and come up with some funding...
And I know that, and I know Clayton is offering that.
Clay's offering?
Yeah.
I mean, that's what's hard, you see our patients leaving our county to go get treatment, you know, and I've been asked, I've been asked 10 times lately, you know, can Clay County offer it? And so that's why I just wanted to ask.
They are setting it up. It's a contract out of Georgia.
It's a contract out of Georgia.
Out of Georgia.
Let's, could we...
Yeah. I mean, we can look into it and see what...
Were we contracted or however?
But the demand is very low.
The what?
At Clay County.
Yeah, the population's very low. Whether it's low or high, I mean, if we're serious about this and offering people, local people, an option, I think it's...
Well, we're offering that vaccination. That's the first choice.
Yeah.
Is get vaccinated.
Yeah, but you're getting bugged, vaccines, mute point.
And we are getting a $20,000 grant, announced this afternoon. It's a federal grant that we can, there are some leeway in that. I'll be meeting with Kathy and, and the reason we got the grant, it was a federal grant that was just sent to us because Macon County is one of those counties that showed that people 60 years and older were not being vaccinated at 55%. So that's where the, and now that money, we can earmark it for a lot of things. There are some leeway in that to establish a program like with Meals on Wheels, or if we need to get with Joy and EMS program, but that $20,000, you know, I asked the question that Josh brought up, could we use some of that money? You really can't buy equipment with it. It has to be for programs, incentives, if you want to do that. It has leeways, but Sergeant Jay Melton will be contacting you tomorrow, and he'll be through the Southwest Commission. But it is Macon County, and it's six-month grant, but if we write the right program, it has a three-month longevity program on it, so, and it increases every year after that. So we hope that that money will benefit and some of the things that, you know, because this equipment, the county has to furnish the equipment, unless you go to a subcontract and it's, and I don't even know nobody's doing it. I mean, they got them from Georgia, so I don't know. But anyway, that's good news, a little bit of good news. And all the vaccines, and there is sad news to hear that they're just flat.
Yeah, and that's really the best option. I mean, we don't want anybody getting sick and needing these monoclonal antibodies, but we want to prevent people getting sick. It's not 100%, but the vaccine is, that has the highest percentage of success.
The most telling thing you can say is the report out of Mission, what, 215 people that passed, none of them were vaccinated, number one. That's the most telling statistics you can see.
If it's not 100%, it's real close.
It's wrong by two people.
It's wrong by two people.
It's wrong by two people. 415 and there were two people.
Well, 415, I didn't see the 312.
There was two.
It's a very high percentage.
Oh, 99.
And really, what they're seeing is those that have passed, that were vaccinated, were in that 65 and older population. And we don't want any of that to happen. What we want is you to get vaccinated.
Well, I mean, there's people who can't get vaccinated.
You're right.
And we know it's a large pool, and so if those people do become sick, I feel like it's our job to provide treatment, an adequate treatment.
It's not a large pool, but it is, there's a small portion of people that can't get vaccinated, and that's why we hope that everyone that can gets vaccinated, so we can protect those people that can't.
I just would like to see some effort.
And slow this vaccine infection.
I just would like to follow up and see what we can do about potentially opening up a treatment center, expanding our treatment center. At least, let's try. Let's at least...
We don't put any effort on this, I mean...
You know, if they're at 85% capacity in the ICU, and these treatments could actually help, let's help prevent them from getting in the ICU. From what I understand, the first five days is critical, and maybe that can prevent them. Maybe you know something different, but that's what I've read.
Not to load your wagon up, because we've got environmental health issues we've got to discuss.
Oh, it's loaded. My wagon's loaded.
Is there someone we could appoint? We don't need to wait till next month or next month. I mean, this, these infusion centers, the vaccine, yeah, if you got the vaccine, fine. But if you've got COVID, the vaccines are mute point. The vaccinated, I mean, vaccinated and unvaccinated getting sick.
Yeah, we need to get here, get vaccinated. It takes sometimes up to, depending on the type, up to six weeks before you're fully...
Yeah, but if you've got COVID, it doesn't matter we've been vaccinated, well, it might already a little bit if you've been vaccinated, but that's what, that's the clientele that are looking for infusion centers. If Jackson County can offer it, if Clay, I mean, if Clayton can offer it, why can't Macon County offer it? Is there someone we can appoint to research that or get with?
I mean, I'd be, we can research it and get you the information.
Yeah, and if it requires some special funding or whatever, I think, I think the citizens of Macon County deserve that.
And there's a lot of hospitals that fuse them.
Yeah.
Michigan gives them, several of them. I'm sure in that, in health departments, you have to have a hospital to verify that. You can't just build on a health department and do it. There has to be a hospital.
They're doing it at the urgent care.
Yeah, but it's through a hospital. That urgent care is hospital-based.
So that's out of my league, but I just, if they can do it in Clay County, we can do it.
Call LA CA, I'm sure they'll hop right on.
I've got, there's some conversations that I can have to see what's the potential, and see if we can look into that. So with that said, to tell you what we're currently doing, you know, we're doing a lot. We've got the call center going, where the call center's making testing appointments. We've got obviously an increase in testing going on right now because of this wave. We've got vaccine appointments, which aren't high enough. We wish that they were higher, and we're also still doing contact tracing, case investigation with all 400 people that are positive. So it's a lot. It's a lot of individuals working to get everything coordinated and to take care of this community like they deserve. We are testing five days a week. Right now, because the demand is low, we're vaccinating on Wednesday mornings and Thursday mornings. And we've introduced the third dose of Pfizer for the immunocompromised, so we've been doing that as well. We're also a big part of the schools' contact tracing with the school nurses and our staff. That takes a lot of time to see if the school, if a student can be in school, or the teacher can be in school, and how long they have to be out. I mean, that's a whole conversation when that happens, about when they can come back to school, and their family, and their students, and it takes a long time.
Do we have like a black and white protocol of quarantines, contact tracing, exposures? Is there something that's cut and dry, black and white, that we can access and say?
It's the North Carolina School Toolkit for the schools, and then the CDC and DHHS provide the guidelines for the general public.
So like, so there's nothing that we can pull up within our county? So, you know, if I've been exposed here...
There is. It's complicated. It's not easy. It's very complicated.
Like, that's where I'm going with this. Like, there's, it seems like everybody who comes to me about this issue, it's frustrating for me because this isn't my department nor my expertise, but they're saying two of the same situations occur, one of them's quarantine for 14 days, one of them's quarantine for 10 days, and one of them goes to school the next day.
Well, many times, they don't know the whole scenario. And that's, you know, we can't breach that confidentiality in no way. So someone may be vaccinated that they didn't believe that person would have gotten vaccinated. We've got a lot of people that have gotten vaccinated, and, you know, they're, they're not necessarily known to have gotten vaccinated, you know. So it changes if you're vaccinated, and it changes the scenario if you've got symptoms or, you know. And so each case is handled on a case-by-case basis, and each family's handled on a family-by-family basis. So it's hard to compare the situation. We also have an issue going on in the jail right now. Sheriff Paul, if he's still here. We've been working with the jail staff and getting testing and back, and we've been offering vaccine for any inmate or detention officer, obviously, but we've had some positives in the jail, and we've been handling that outbreak as well. Right now, we don't have any outbreaks in the nursing homes, which is, they've done a wonderful job maintaining, you know, limiting visitation, encouraging their staff to get vaccinated, so we really are grateful for that. And our next couple of operations that we're gonna be looking at taking on is we have to, we're gonna be offering flu shots. So here we go with another vaccine that we've got to offer. So we're gonna be doing that, as well as, you've been hearing, the third dose is coming up, more than likely. We don't have all the details of the third dose and, you know, what that's gonna look like exactly, but we will be issuing press releases once we nail down... we nail down the, the scheduling for both the flu shots and the, the third dose. We're waiting to hear some of the information from the state. Um, some of the date, the issues that we're dealing with is fatigue. Our staffing is just, you know, they've been going at this for 79 weeks. And like I said, we've got 15 vacancies in a 63, out of 63 positions and it's hard. They're, they're, they have been working very hard with the community. They've been getting bashed, dealing with it at times. Um, that's okay for a short period of time, but for a long period of time, it gets really hard. Um, and we're not see, we're not able to easily replace those vacancies. There's a high demand on just about every position that we have right now. So it's, it's a struggle and it's a constant reminder, you know, that we're all trying to build each other up constantly and, and recognize the, the hard work they're doing and the good work that they're doing. We have the National Guards here helping until December, uh, the 3rd. So we know we'll have them for, through this flu vaccine period and hopefully through most of the third dose vaccine period. They're also helping with the testing. Uh, it's, it's, that definitely is a big help. We had, we wouldn't be functioning as well as we are without them. So I appreciate all the phone calls. You guys help make those phone calls to make sure that that happened. We also have staff through an agency called CCNC. It's a state agency. Um, they're having a lot of, uh, trouble finding staff for us as well. I mean, we've not been able to get a nurse through that agency since this started. We've gotten help with people to help answer the phones, um, but in contact tracing, but not nursing staff.
Are there temp agencies?
No, they're a state agency that was started because of the outbreak and is meant to support local health departments. It's just a struggle to find the staff that we need.
I'm sure every county's-
Yeah. Yeah.
Those 15 now, Kathy, are they, do you have some that's out? But that is 15, you said 15 vacancies?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, have you advertised them for those jobs on a regular basis?
I had, two of those were today. Um, so yes, I've got everything that I've, that I've known about advertised.
But it's ever-
And it's been advertised for a, a long period of time. So, you know, even, even when we see someone move up in a promotion-type scenario, it's who's going to fill their, their vacant slot. Um, and that's, you know, we're not seeing the overall capacity getting solidified. And that's, that's really hard on everyone.
Are there temp agencies that deal with that?
There, there are, I mean, there's some, but there's, yeah, they're- They're just not out there right now. I mean, the hospitals are demanding nurses and, um, the rate, we can't compete with the salary and-
I understand.
So, and we're also dealing with the fact that our staff and their family members are, um, you know, we're in a wave right now. So some of them have become positive and their family members have been caught, become positive. So they've had to be out with kids or, you know, so not only we have those vacancies, but we're dealing with the same impact of this wave that everybody else is. So it's, it's definitely hard.
These people that's leaving, Kathy, is it strictly salary or they're overworked, underpaid or do you have agents interviews with?
I can tell you they're overworked and underpaid. Um-
Is that what you're saying in the red?
But I think an outbreak is going to overwork. I mean, it's taken its toll. I can tell you it's a money issue. There is cases that it's a money issue. Um, there's a case, there's cases of people just simply being burnt out. There's a-
About overtime?
Even, even with overtime, they're, you know, they're, they're, they just can't do anymore, you know? Um, they are, uh, there's people considering different careers because they just are tired of it and exhausted. And, you know, it, the, um, you know, appreciation helps when, when it's given and they, they suck that up and really, you know, appreciate that level of gratefulness. But there, there's money issues, there's burnout issues.
Have you done exit interviews with all these folks?
And, yeah, that we, all but one, yeah.
Them that you let go, you probably-
All but one.
Okay. And it was that, that the theme, uh, too much to do and-
There's a, I mean, we're in, obviously we're in the middle of an outbreak.
A million dollars an hour and they still ain't going to do nothing, so.
But I don't want that to stop paying these people what they, what they need to be paid. I mean, you know, yes, the money helps. Um, and they deserve it. They deserve every penny of it and then some. They are truly incredible individuals working for this community. And I know some of you, um, have talked with them yourselves and have experienced some of that. So, um, you know, they're just, they're working non-stop trying to talk families through this scenario, get people safe. We had, um, there's some heartbreaking stories I could go into.
Has other health departments experienced in the same thing?
Exactly the same thing. I, you know, it's, we talk, we team, we, um, it's, it's just, it's the life of this outbreak right now. There's high demand, but low supply of staff. There's, you know, it's har- very difficult to keep the morale up. Everybody is, you know, over, overworked, exhausted because they, they will independently want to do the absolute best that they can until the point where they're burning themselves out. You have to tell them to just go home. You gotta go home at some point. Um, and we've been doing this for-
Have you spoke to the county manager about that?
Yes, he knows.
Huh?
He understands, yes. He knows and he understands.
What do you do about it, do you know?
He's working his, you know, what off, trying to-
The doctor's office has experienced the same thing?
I mean, I think yes, to some degree, yes, they are. They, I mean, we've been trying to support them as best we can. We've got a couple of them that, that have offered to, we, we supply them with vaccines so that when their patients come in and all of a sudden want a vaccine, they have it on hand and they can give it.
Well, that's going to be one of your relief valves, if I just, you know.
But they're, you know, they're dealing right now in this wave. They're dealing with all, you know, the, the COVID individuals that are positive but don't need to go to the ER or the hospital. And that's, they're just as over-
Yeah, you can't do it all.
No.
You can't, this, this is unusual. So-
I know.
You just have to adjust and-
And keep moving forward. And that's what we're doing. We're trying.
Kathy, we appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Where are we at on environmental health? That's another-
You want to talk about environmental health? So, um, with, some of those vacancies are in environmental health. And of course, we've at the same time seen quite a bit of influx of applications come in. People want to be here. Um, right now, we've got 146 app, applications in. That's wells and onsite. Um, but that's a lot for us. Uh, they, we have three gentlemen that are employed that are working on this right now. Um, I have communicated with Derek and Lori and with Paul about trying to get some, uh, doing a budget amendment so that I can contract with some environmental health staff from other counties that are willing to help Macon County on their ti- time off. So that's in place if you guys are willing to consider that.
A budget amendment, I mean, the money's in your budget.
I'm moving money from lap salary to contracted services so that we can-
Budget amendments in the consent agenda.
I mean, I think it's imperative.
Budget amendments in the consent agenda to do what she's saying.
Are they agreed to terms?
I, as soon as, yes. I've got everything in place and as soon as you approve it tonight, we're going to be, there's four of them.
You're going to have to replace for Paul and the other lords that work in.
I've got one application for the supervisor position. And then, like I said, when you fill that, it's filling the, the vacated slot that possibly can happen. If somebody's-
How many people are you down in environmental health?
I think four.
Four?
Mm-hmm.
Are they all in respect?
Three of them I think are wells and onsite and one of them's food and lodging.
You've got four, you've got three, then you got to train to the, the, you got-
Yeah, we got-
Intern or whatever you want.
Yeah, and yeah, there's, we do have another environmental health specialist, but he's not authorized yet. And he actually goes to CIT training the end of this month.
And you can advertise from now in a time and you're not going to get any applicants. Every county, and I deal with this in it, Western, you're not going to get any applications.
It, it's, between the health directors, we know we're just competing with higher numbers. Um, they're rotating between counties and we're losing the competition right now.
Do you prioritize when the applicants that come in for building, for a new house? Do they take priority over somebody wanting to do a subdivision that speculate land or?
We have certain-
We had a prioritization system at one time.
And there is still that level of priority. Of course, repairs and complaints get, are given priority. Um, we have what we call due diligence. If somebody's piece of property, they're, um-
Got closing?
Yeah, they've got closing and they're waiting. They have to have something in order to, the transaction to go through. We give that a priority. Um, and, and of course, finals, you know, any final that we're doing, that takes time. So there is a, a priority system, but other than that, it's first, you know, the oldest date.
Jack, do you have a clue how many is being held up right now for building permits?
Uh, don't have a number, but it's substantial.
Substantial. That's what wagon's adopting.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
We, we, all states employed three, three weeks ago, four weeks ago. I think it's imperative with the latest decision, hey, we're going to do internal-
Yeah.
Advancements.
Yeah.
Uh, get the money, get, get ahold of these guys, get back to your environmental health supervisor or program coordinator, whatever. Set up schedule with them.
Yeah, they're, that's all set, ready to go.
Yeah, get them, get them here. Now, the best, one of the best ones we've, he's in Swain, in, in Haywood County. He's retiring just winter. Uh, well, the top-notch environmental health specialist in the state. He's willing to come, but his supervisor won't let him out of Haywood County right now. He's been working Caldwell and they let that, they went private, they went to Soul Group. Is it Caldwell?
Caldwell.
Went for the, they, they did away with their environmental health spec-
And Burke County's living the same thing.
And went with the Soul Group, but the Soul Groups are all worked up three months. Everybody did. This is a boom. We have a COVID boom, we have a building boom, and it's imperative to the economy, them, of Macon County, that we, we get on this net. We need, that decision needs to be, in the morning, when you go back to hell, say, here's what we got. We're doing it. And, uh, let's get, and, and let's keep trying to get, we've got some people possibly could do the contract work. And see these contracts, they can name, they can name their prices right now.
Yeah.
Just like in the private sector. So let's make a decision. I'm, when you're through, I'll make a motion.
I, I'm-
You do?
You can handle it on the consent agenda.
Oh, we're talking consent, good deal. Consider it done.
Anything else going on in the hall?
Let's just get it.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Good luck, Kathy.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Just stress, that's all.
Oh, yeah.
All right, moving on to old business.
Mr. Chairman, could we add one more item? I'm sorry, I left this out. Item number, it's going to be new business, 11F, the Franklin High School Architectural Services. We received the, uh, response from the committee, uh, for the RFQs on that.
Which agenda are you on? We're talking about the same thing, you're mine.
All right, old business, Macon Middle School locker room, grid tabulation. Do I need to-
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you'll see that in your agenda packet. What we had, we had, uh, notice, of course, picked that up, the architectural services on that. We had one responding bid, at the, uh, the bid price was $2,347,000. Uh, at this time, the county has budgeted for that, $1,053,868. The contractor has since reached out, uh, to the county and has invited us, if, if we would like to, to sit down and go through some value engineering on that, to see if we can get that price down a, a little bit. At the current, at, at the moment, we received those bids on October, on August 18th, 2021. Those bids are good until October 17th. So if the board is so inclined to move in that direction, um, you know, if they want to let the liaisons, uh, look at that and discuss that, uh, the liaison committee with representatives from the school board, uh, we again have, these bids are good to October 17th. So I think under this, uh, current bid we have, um, we, we could go forward and do that if that's, if the board would so choose to value engineer that.
There's no blame in this.
Yep, I mean, I'd be more than happy, more than happy, more than willing to sit down and, and discuss. Hopefully, Mr. Shields, I know he'd be likely to join us and, uh, I'd love to hear what they have to say. I'd love to see what, what options they could present to us. I spoke with Jack a little bit ago. I mean, I'm not opposed to a nice metal building over in Swain County, right along the football field. They've got a really nice, uh, metal building, a little bit of knee wall, rock, some glass openings. Uh, you know, Jack, right now with the price of metal, it's a toss-up, but I'd like to just look at other options and, uh, hear what they have to say.
With that being said, we'll be happy to schedule a meeting, uh, with the liaison committee and maybe invite the contractor, Jack?
Yeah.
And sit down and go over services.
Yeah. Do you need a message, Glenn?
Just to get a nod. Anybody's in a great for that. Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, item 10B, the Nana Hala Community Building, Mr. Higgins?
Been talking about it for months, years. Uh, I think we need to decide. We've got the building sitting there and if the board will entertain a motion, I'll make a motion addressing the situation in Nana Hala. I think we need to get an architect on board. Have a committee of two from, if the library wants to partner, two members from the library, two members from the community club and two members for that large in the community. And form a committee as to the highest and best use of that property.
Did the school board make a decision?
Uh, the school board has not made a formal decision. I did speak with the superintendent who informed me that, um, you know, that they probably won't take that up with the representative from the Nana Hala community would not be in favor of having the, uh, library located at the school. And with that being said, um, he, he felt like that the board would-
And he's on that board?
Well, he seemed, with that being said, he felt like the board would be, uh, inclined to agree with the representative from that community.
Shouldn't vote up or down?
Well, so we're gonna, I think-
We go ahead with pause motion, whatever, but that board needs to vote up or down. Let them people go and know what to have, the school board voting.
Well, we can't wait forever on this school board, so-
No.
It's not their decision.
What was your motion again, Paul? I'm sorry.
My motion would be, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we authorize Derek Rowland to, uh, and working with Jack, to, to solicit an engineer, uh, an architect to do a preliminary design of the building in Nana Hala by forming a six-member committee, two representatives from the library, if they're interested in participating, two from the Nana Hala Community Club and two not associated at large members of the public, to which I'll nominate one and then let him recommend another. Just two people who are not tied to either board. And you can narrow that down all you want to, Derek, but you know the gist of the motion.
What architect, who? We got to choose from.
I think, uh, we have talked with, uh, an architect in Jackson County that does a lot of the, um, smaller county projects, uh, for Jackson County. Uh, Jack has been talking with him. I, I think, uh, that, or we, if the board would like to, uh- That, or we, if the board would like to, however they would like to do it, I mean, it's such a small project, usually it's handled by a resolution exempting architectural services. And we contract with an architect and go ahead and get it done rather than going through a bid process for a project that's going to be so small.
Jack, go off to work with one, yeah, this is where we really miss our friend, Tom River.
Yes.
We really do, so.
Is there another local architect? I mean, I hope that's not my cup of tea.
I don't know, there's one in Highlands.
Yeah, Mr. Well.
But they're not taking work.
There's someone in Highlands, but I don't know anybody up there that'll accept it.
They won't take no work.
We've got an architect from SGA right here. Discuss with them.
I do want, Jack, I can't, I'm a reader.
This is one of the architects for the middle grade schools going to talk to you, I'm not Dr. Price there. I'm SGA that would.
You're looking for a little side job? Starting next week? Just with Derek and Jack worked and could, will you bring a proposal to us?
We will have to bring a resolution back next meeting. In the meantime, we'll have to negotiate with the architect, get a price, and we can informally get a couple of prices. They have to be below the 49.9 threshold to be able to exempt the service. So we'll have to informally get a couple of proposals, see what their timeline is, and, and come back to the board with options in October.
Now, will you charge that architect, we're just doing a preliminary design?
We won't charge the architect, we'll negotiate, we'll see, we'll show the architect what we have of the building. Kind of give him an overview of what we expect and we'll get a proposal back from the architect. We'll contact multiple architects. And at such time, if those proposals are, fall within the range of, of being able to have a resolution that exempts that service. Then we'll bring that resolution along with that proposal back to the board in October.
Deal, thank you.
Right, we have a motion on the floor to proceed in that direction.
Second.
We got a second and further discussion. All in favor, see if I was saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The director, Frank Commissioner Bell opposes, the other four commissioners are in favor. Thank you. New business discussion concerning Macon Middle School. We just did that, locker room facility. Did we handle that in the previous item, Mr. Manager?
I'm at A C M for here.
Hey, y'all want to act like me, guys, you know, somebody's insanity here.
Yeah, we did, we had that on there twice, I meant to ask the.
All right.
You excuse them, Paul.
We'll talk about it next month, today doesn't matter.
I like, I like topics that go by that quickly. All right, item 11B, grant request for Macon County Emergency Services, Mr. Warren Cave, Emergency Management Director. Warren, thank you for being here and thank your team too, we've had numerous conversations with Warren and just like Kathy, we're not in similar situations. We appreciate you all, Warren.
Thank you.
I think you actually probably got this in your package before you were listed out. You got a budget amendment.
What department is it?
Can you hear a paramedic?
Yes, you got a budget amendment for that, okay.
Thank you, sir.
So I'm here tonight to ask for approval to apply for and accept two different grants. First one I'm going to talk about is the Buy It Built Grant. We were approached, I think, either the day over, the day after the last board meeting. Buy Health had some funding left over from a project that they wanted to put into the community health initiative and ask us if we had a, any kind of a project that would fit the, the program that they were looking for. We've actually worked with those folks before with our community paramedic program. We've, we've had with the mental health facilities that are here, our community medics have had training on mental health issues. And we, we've dealt with, with some of their patients along the way, so we, we've had a relationship with these agencies before. And all of that ends up being medication reconciliation, but long story short, they were familiar with some of the things that we did. But we were under a very tight deadline, we had two days to get a project together to get to them. So we submitted them a project and they have basically agreed to fund 13 weeks, two days each week of our community paramedic program for home visits. So 26 total days dating.
Might be extended.
Dating back as far as July 1st, which includes salary and expenses for those two days a week. And they have agreed to fund a software program. The record keeping program we currently have is separate from our normal EMS charting system and it's separate from a hospital system. But they've agreed to fund the program so that the, the charting for the home patients will be tied to the regular charting system. So those records can actually go flow back and forth. And the system actually can tie into the, the hospital system, so we can dip into some of those records and actually, it's more like a physician's office record as opposed to emergency medical records. So they have agreed to fund, upon your acceptance, $11,278. So I'm asking for approval to apply for, which I've already done, and accept the grant and approval with the budget amendment that you have attached there. And you'll notice that the, the budget amendment states $11,201. Lori Hall doesn't do cents, so we rounded it up to $11,201, which is why there's about a 13 some cent difference there.
Motion to approve.
We got a motion to approve that grant and the budget amendment by Commissioner Bill, second by Commissioner Shields, all in favor, see if I was saying aye and raising your hand.
Thank you. The, the second one is actually through the Nana Hala Health Foundation, it's the Collaborative Health Innovation Project application. One of the things we've been working on with the, the fire commission is we are putting together a, an incident management team for our land searches. What we've found is that particularly when we have lost persons or we have carryouts, we typically are experiencing a manpower issue. Some of those are requiring much more manpower to get into these places. Macon County has about 90 miles, at least 90 miles of trails, over about 16 different trails. So we were looking at some projects on, on how to get those folks out. The state has some resources, but typically those resources are so far away that they, we can't wait on them to get here to do what we do. Particularly if it's an injured patient, particularly places like Appalachian Trail that are deep back somewhere, we, we can't wait on somebody to come four or five hours with a helicopter and then make it grounded somewhere before they get here. So typically, those are carryouts. So we looked at a collaborative effort with fire departments and we, we're putting together a team of two or three qualified people from each fire department. That will be trained on how to deal with wild land search and rescues. It takes special people to, to do the backwood stuff, you don't want just anybody back in there. We started looking at the equipment that might be helpful for us and we paid a visit to Glenwood Cacher Rescue Squad. And we have access to ATVs and UTVs and four wheel drive vehicles and we can get into fire service roads when necessary, if fire service is involved. But what we found is a lot of those things don't fit. And Glenwood Cachers actually uses something called a Roadcon, it's a, it's a two wheel drive motorcycle that's like an ATV. If you've ever seen one, they're, they're fairly unique, we actually sent some folks over there to, to use them, they used them on, they used them on Ellicott's Rock down in that direction quite a bit. So we, we talked to the fire departments, two of the fire departments wanted to partner with us on the grant application. Those two departments are Otto Fire and Rescue and West Macon Fire and Rescue. Because typically for the Appalachian Trail, those are the two departments that are on either end that pass it through Macon County for the most part. So what we wanted to do was ask the Nana Hala Health Foundation for $30,000, which will fund two of those vehicles, a trailer to put them in, the safety equipment to go with them. And it'll be kept and maintained by us and the fire departments and used by anybody in Macon County. There's no match, we don't know when, it could be December before we find out anything with this one. But there's no match required and it would be a shared resource for all those agencies.
We get a motion, I see no proof, motion by Commissioner Young. Second by Commissioner Higgins, all in favor?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, wait a minute, Warren, let's go back to the community care program, because Warren just brings things up. What, what he didn't say is this was started before the pandemic. This is, we're going on our fourth year in this program. We are probably one, Warren's department is probably one of the leaders in the state on the community care paramedic program. It's hard to keep the data of how many people that's kept out of the ER, Warren, it's, it's hard, but it's, I know for a fact, it's numerous. And so just like to say a shout out to Joey Gibson and Warren and all the people that worked there and the man that makes this happen and that we, you don't know his name, his name is Donald Ross, he handles the money for value. So it's just appreciated, a lot many people, the community know about that, but the ones that have the service, Warren, know exactly about it. So I just wanted to make sure that we had a little something in there to remind the folks how important a program this is and how unique a program this is throughout the state. And the United States is worth that though, so we appreciate you, Warren.
I actually, I asked the question this morning, one of the things that we're still doing, we do home vaccinations. We're able to partner with health department and still do vaccines from their supply and do home vaccinations for those folks. And right now, we're, as of this morning, we've got about 90 patients in that program. Typically, we would run about 65, there, there are some very dedicated individuals over there that we pull off the truck to, to do their home visits. Today, for instance, we, we don't have, we, we have a staffing issue, we, we have, out of our 41 full time staff, we have seven vacancies. So when you throw those vacancies in and the sicknesses we've had and the, I've got two folks that are, that are waiting to, to see where we're at on, on our pay status, figure out what they're going to do, unfortunately. So we, we've had to, to be very creative on how we kept these programs up. Today, we had three of the community medics working today, we won't have any tomorrow, so we, we've had to kind of fly with the punches on how to keep that program maintained. But those folks do a really good job and I actually asked the question to Todd Doster this morning, I said, you know, how did, if I get asked the question, how do I know how many people we have kept out of the back of that ambulance? And it, it's hard to tell, we, we can put our finger on some. But we also know that there's some that just because those folks visit, they don't call an ambulance to come just check them or have something what we would call a refusal. We'd have a resource evaluating them that's not available for, for Josh Young or Paul Higgins or whomever. So, so there's a lot of that we can't put our finger on, but I, I do know that's a, a very popular program, particularly with those folks. I would probably get run out of town if we decided to undo that program. We're not going to undo that program.
Thank you, Warren.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Warren.
Consideration change order for Macon Middle School project. Mr. Jack Morgan, County Permanent Development Director, welcome, Jack.
Thank you for having us, very busy tonight, I'd like to turn this position over to one of our architects from SGA in Amor Ratt, Macon Middle School, is going to give you an upgrade and talk about the change order.
Can you reach me again, I'm sorry?
My name is Chris Coleman.
Chris Coleman, welcome, Chris.
Appreciate everybody's time, similar to what Jack was saying, just wanted to kind of give a brief update of where we are on the middle school project. Currently, we are done with phase one. If you're familiar with that school, that would encompass what we call the center core area, cafeteria, a little bit of work we were doing in the locker rooms. Currently, we're wrapping up phase two, which is what we call the east wing, which faces the parking lot and the bus area. We're looking to turn that over here within the next week or two. So all in all, I would definitely have to give a nod of the cap to New Atlantic Construction, they're doing an excellent job, they're keeping their foot on the gas. We're in, you know, constant communication with them daily, multiple times a day on any issues that come up, you know, we try to work them out as best as we can. So with that, you know, I think from a scheduling standpoint, they are slated to be ahead of schedule, so that definitely is a plus for the project. Coming out of this first phase, there were some cost implications, so that's some of what we wanted to talk about today. So I'm going to kind of walk through them out of order, I think you may have them in your packet, I'll kind of go from smallest implication to the largest. The first one was about, was $11,469,000. That was with the, related to the new rooftop, that would be PCO number six in your package. That is related to the complete change out of the HVAC systems at that school. When we first started the job back in the spring, early summertime, we're, we're in a volatile climate right now in terms of manufacturers and materials. We got an email through New Atlantic Construction, basically saying that the manufacturer, Dyken, had bumped us to the back of the line. To get us back on schedule with their production schedule, there was a, I like to call it a jump the line fee, which was about $80,000. We had that conversation internally and said that that was something that we were not interested in paying. So what we did was we were able to circle back with our engineers along with New Atlantic Construction. We talked with Jack, we talked with Tracy Morgan over at the school, what we decided to do was not pay that amount. In turn, we would just receive the units as they are issued through production. Currently, we have about 60% of those units and we're trying to work out the schedule of when we can actually install those. In a succession plan that does not, I guess it minimizes disruption to the school. In doing that and not paying that amount, which you're seeing how that amount for $11,469, that covers an additional crane, manpower. And the trade off on that was instead of using, we're going to use curb adapters for those new roofing units. In doing that, there was some credit give back from the construction team where we did not have to do a lot of the structural work related to the roof joists up on that roof, because these new units are much lighter. So that, there was a credit for that, so that, that is that PCO number six that you see there. The next one I'd like to talk about is a PCO number nine, that is for $16,254. That is related to a mixed bag of items, if you kind of flip to page two of that document, just kind of run through those. For example, number 24 duct to admin area under the mezzanine with the new HVAC units that we were putting in that phase one, specifically in the library area. Once we got into the demolition side and was getting ready to activate the renovation, once we started tearing out the walls, we, there were some structural items and some structural issues that were not allowing us to actually install the design the way it was. So what we had to do was back up, get with our engineering team, we were actually able to reuse some of the existing ducts that were in the school. We vetted those properly, they're perfectly fine, perfectly clean, to put those back online, so that's what we did. But the trade off on that was we installed new supply grills everywhere in that center core area with the library. So that's what some of that cost is. The ramp flooring, that was, while we were in design, I think we actually changed the, through alternate, the type of flooring that we were actually going to put into the project. And in doing that, we covered the administration area, all the other areas that were not originally a part of the base bid. However, that was covering just going from the ramp, from the, the main entry level down into library areas, that, that's what that was for. The soft vents, based off the original scope of the design intent, you know, just to make sure we were staying aligned in budget, which I think we executed that pretty well based off the bids that we have. But you know, now that we were actually in the renovation portion of it, we decided to actually go back and make everything a little bit more consistent with the soft vents. And then also just kind of put those conditions back similar to what they have. Relocating the sidewalls, that was a decision that we all made collectively as a architectural, contractual, construction team. Especially with that new roof they were placing on the school, we wanted to minimize the amount of roof penetrations that were going back, so it was better betted to mount those on the side of the building. Instead of actually penetrating the roof for that. Two by two toilets around the, two by two infill around the toilets, that is a minimal cost, I think that was about maybe $300, $400. That was the impact of removing, replacing toilet fixtures where you have smaller tile. And that was just a simple matter of putting it back as best as possible to match it. And add exhaust ducts in the admin bathrooms, quite honestly, the existing conditions, there were no exhaust ducts in those bathrooms. So to put it back from a code standpoint and to kind of minimize some of the problems that we had before we actually started the project, that is some of those items for that. Number seven is for just over $28,000. If you flip to the second page of that item, it is talking about the exterior soffits, that's related to some lighting. What we wanted to do was just kind of provide more of a clean look, there were some areas where the soffits where we did not have lights, we've decided to put those back. Also in doing that, the climate of COVID, there's been delays across the board for a number of materials. So in order to get certain materials or certain lighting packages or lighting fixtures, there was a slight cost increase on that. The biggest highlight of that package is the second and third items, I'll start with the third, the locker rooms, the two by four light retrofits. That was simply just a hundred. just a unseen condition. When we came through the original kind of field data to verify some of the existing conditions, we were, as a design team and even contractors, running the impression that was a jipboard or sheet rock ceiling. Once we got into the demolition phase, we were able to realize that that was a plaster ceiling. Anybody knows anything about that? To install the new lights, to replacement lights for that, that scope of work, we were talking about a difference of a lot of inch and a half to two inches to make those work. So that would have been more cost prohibitive or inhibitive to force the contractor to cut out the additional one to two inches to force those new lights to work. So it was cheaper or more economical to retrofit those and actually to just save one manpower for that. The number four, where we're talking about the 600 amp breaker panel, we were trying to pull power from the existing panel that was in that existing electrical room. Once we got to that renovation scope, it was determined that that panel was pretty much maxed out. So from an electrical standpoint, when we were tying into new switch gears, we kind of had to pick from the new panel. So that was what that cost was inhibitive of. And last but not least, that is the elephant in the room is for the fire alarm. That is for just over $97,000. The big package with that is when we had the fire alarm contractor come out to the school, verify the existing conditions in preparation for their scope of work. It was determined that extra fixtures or devices were needed to be added to that. In doing so, that has tripped the amount of fixture counts or device counts that the existing fire alarm panel would have. We've had extensive conversations with the fire alarm contractor, the silver lining in that, they did anticipate replacing that panel in their base bid amount for that. So that was not.
Say that again a little slower. They did not.
They, in, the fire alarm contractor did include replacing of the panel in their bid. This cost is primarily the materials, labor, and the added devices that we had to add for that system to bring it up to code. Quite simply, we put that system as well over 30 to 40 years old over the years.
Why are we talking about it now? Where was that at? Wouldn't that be caught in the front end to sit at now? A hundred pound buck?
No, from our prior engineering teams, they've since left and taken other jobs. But I've had extensive conversations with them. The intent was, even when they had talked with the fire alarm reps, they felt like they could modify that existing system without having to fully replace it. The caveat where we get to this point is, the code issue is, you're fine with the system not being in sync throughout the school. But the problem lies is if we take the east wing, if we've added new devices and trying to tie back the existing devices, even if it's a millisecond apart from a code violation, that's something that we just can't do because it could treat a seizure, which, you know, poses life.
We had extensive conversations about the alarm system before. And I mean, it's really surprising to me to see a hundred grand pop up. Maybe we ought to send this to the engineer, I think.
We actually had the engineer come back out and walk the job site. We've had two or three extensive meetings on this, this particular item. And quite honestly, this number was a little bit higher than what it was. We're actually able to bring it down some.
Say that again?
The, the number.
You beat him down?
Yes.
You didn't beat him down enough. You didn't beat him down another 97, 761.
Yeah. And trust me, that, that is a conversation that we have definitely had a great length. But it really just boils down to that system is 30 to 40 years old. So when you're adding.
But we knew that going in. We knew what the system was going in. We had extensive conversations about this particular thing. And we were assured that he is fine. We can reconnect to that.
That is, that, I understand the same conversation. But once we had the fire alarm contractor in, I mean.
Who's the contractor?
Jack has been a part of those conversations. And quite honestly, when you're trying to tie in the new devices.
Who is the contractor?
Jackson, Jackson.
Jackson Electrical.
Is he the fire alarm contractor? He's a electrical contractor?
He's electrical.
Jackson Electric, electric contractor.
Is he the fire alarm?
NCI.
NCI, yes, sir. So NCI.
Carl.
I'm dealing with Logan.
So can we put it out to bid?
Can you put it out to bid? No, I mean, this is something that has to be taken care of. It's a life safety issue.
With what?
It's a life safety issue. So it's not something that we can actually put out to bid.
There are other people that does it besides one company, right?
Uh, yes, yes, sir, it is. But I mean, with the extensive, the amount of renovations that we're doing now, I wouldn't, I couldn't recommend.
For a hundred grand of making kind of taxpayer dollars that was overlooked, we might could do that.
I can't necessarily say that was overlooked or oversight.
We talked about it then. Jack was in the meeting, Mr. Shields was in the meeting, Derek was in the meeting.
Yes, sir. I mean, certainly, yes, we did have the conversation. Things certainly do change.
And it was in the vital work that we could reuse this panel and rehook to it. That was in the contract.
That was in the contract. But before we added the additional devices, the, the whole, the panel is not the issue. The issue is you're paying for new wires and devices and the labor. You've got devices in that school that are well over 30 to 40 years old. So it.
But we knew that going in.
Correct. But it makes no sense. You cannot tie in the old wiring with the new.
That's what I can remember taking for a living. It makes perfect good sense to me. If you know it's going in, people aren't going to write you a check.
I can't guarantee that that was 100% when we had that conversation upfront. I mean, talking to our prior engineers, they did talk with the current.
Did you fire them or what you do as a prior engineer?
Oh, they actually left to take other job opportunities. So we still have the same engineering team. But I've gone back and had conversations with them. They had, they did talk with the fire alarm rep that services that school. And even at that point in time, the rep felt like with what the amount of devices that we were adding, he felt like it would work. Things obviously did change once we got.
Wasn't this in the scope of work, Jack?
The part of it was, but when you hook the new panel, because we added more devices, when you hooked it to the new panel, nothing would sync with the old equipment, the old equipment being 30 to 40 years old. And it wouldn't sync with the strobes or the horns either, which you've got going like this and that. That will cause that like seizure.
That's, that's the crux of the issue is when you're, the system itself can be out of sync. But if you have a particular wing or a particular area, that area has to be in sync. So we're talking about what we call the east wing that's facing the front parking lot and the bus loop. If you've got, let's say, six old devices and five new devices, and those devices are not blinking at the same time, but they're out of sync, even if it's a millisecond out of sync, that is your life safety and code issue where that could cause a seizure.
I understand, Commissioner Bill's question. I don't think we disagree with that at all.
Sure.
We want it right.
Yeah, we want it perfect.
I guess the question is, is we hired an engineering firm, we hired you, whoever it was, to do this. And then why wasn't this picked up on initially? Why is this coming to us now? Why, why wasn't this figured out from the get-go upfront? I mean, what's causing a $100,000 error? I mean, is this the NCI's fault that it was not picked up on? Is this the engineer's fault? Whose fault that this wasn't found or wasn't recognized upfront?
I mean, I can't necessarily overly blame one particular party.
We're the bell out party, isn't it?
I mean, our engineers, they, they did the best of their ability to try to make sure that was accounted for. Obviously, they fell short of that. So.
Do they have ours in emissions insurance?
Uh, yes, I believe they do.
I'd have them check on it.
I'm inclined, I mean, I'm inclined, it would have been nice to know about this. And you had those, you were raised on, you had those lengthy discussions.
We had that talk about the, because we could, we'd say that could be a big, a big ticket number. And we were assured that they could have hooked everything back up. And even if, even if it had to change, we should have been left knowing about it then, not after, not to we're down to the tenebriety for a hundred grand. But if the engineer, if you're standing there saying that the engineer missed this.
I mean, I can't 100% that they, they fully missed it. Yes. I mean, obviously, there was an oversight. But I can't 100% lay the blame at their feet. Again, going back to your original statement, yes, we did have those conversations with the fire alarm vendor that services that school. But in doing so, before we even got to this point when NCI came out to the school, there were, through other parties and other conversations, there were devices that were added to fully bring this system back up to code. And that really and truly is, just from a life safety standpoint, as your architectural team members, that's just something that we can't turn a blind eye to or push down the line.
What does the engineer say that missed? What's he, did he say, I just missed it? Or it's an oversight?
His direct statement to me was, he felt like it was a oversight or a, I don't want to say a miscommunication or misunderstanding, but it was his regulation, regulations when he had the earlier conversations with the vendors, the fire alarm vendors that actually monitored and put that in over the years and the patch works and the Band-Aids on that system. They felt like it, it would, you know, stand up to the test. But obviously, we're hearing that's not necessarily the case.
Is that what?
Yeah, hard for anybody but me and Paul out.
Big time. What's our contingency? What are we seeing?
We started, we started this project with 817,000, we started this project with 817,800 in contingency. Chris, you said you're finishing up phase two. Now, there's four phases on that project, is that right?
It's actually five. So when we look at it from a construction or square footage standpoint, we, once we turn over the east wing on the front of the school, we'll be about, right about 60% complete.
60% complete with the change orders.
So if we're looking at the.
If you give more fee more a hundred grand, it won't.
Right.
If we're looking at the change order compared to the contingency amount that we have, we're sitting at about 24%.
Right.
The object is not to spend it all. You do know that.
Absolutely.
You've got 788,882 in contingency tonight. If these all are approved, you'll have 635,044 in contingency tomorrow. And that was, again, out of a beginning contingency balance of 817,800.
Mr. Man, what's your opinion on the fire alarm system?
My opinion on the fire alarm system is, I shared that, you all's opinion, and I voiced that to Jack from the beginning, that it's something that, that we discussed from the beginning. It's something that I was under the impression was covered into the contract. And I, like you, have stated here tonight, you know, that's a huge, that's a huge change order. But.
In my world, we eat stuff like that.
I eat stuff. We're contractors, so.
We're contractors, doing every day. We eat it. You ever had to eat anything?
Yes.
Well, would you like to try something else?
No, I would not. But I mean, I will say for a school that of this age and the percentage of completion where we are, yes, this is a shocker to the system. But I feel like we are moving at a good target or a good pace of completion where there won't be, or shouldn't be any more change orders of this magnitude out of the base bid of this contract.
This is for the entire school. This is not just for the wings that we worked.
No, that's what we had the discussions about at LIM. We were assured, because we know that we have been kicked without them. We knew that.
Correct.
But we, at least we had the discussions upfront and.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bill. We did have the discussions. But I think the, the major point of that is when you're trying to, like I said, merge old devices with new devices, that, that this cost is basically changing out those old devices. So everything is in sync together. Now, yes, we did have those conversations. And when, you know, fire marshal actually visited.
That's the best price we can get on for a hundred grand?
Yes. We have, I've asked the contractor to go back to the table multiple times.
We started at 111,000 to this.
We had.
Started what, Jack?
Originally, it was 111,000.
But I mean, I will say for a school that is going through an active renovation, I couldn't recommend on good faith, you know, pushing that down the line.
Can I have just a second? Talking about your heartburn, I'll tell you what gives me a little bit of heartburn is the windows. And I've talked to Mr. Morgan about that. You know, that was, in my opinion, one of the, one of the main reasons we're renovating the school, am I right? I mean, the metal windows are rotten now. Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but now we're not able to change the windows because they're structurally, you know, holding up the wall. But I feel like what we're having to pay versus what we're getting credit for, I mean, the ratios just don't add up. And, and I'm not a contractor. But to me, it seems like that's a very large part of the scope of changing out these windows. And now to kind of piece them together, it seems like we should be receiving a credit.
So the, the windows, that was a completely separate issue. To kind of summarize that from the beginning, yes, when the contractor mobilized on site and started doing some of their selective demolition for those windows conditions, we actually figured out that you cannot take out that steel frame on that school without putting in other structural supports. We've gone through that exercise on that, that particular item. And quite honestly, it was in the best interest to leave those steel windows. Now, we did replace the window itself. If you looked at the condition, you had the frame and then you had the window that was welded to that frame. So what we did was we took out the actual window with the glass, remodeled the frame, and then put in new storefront windows. So yes, you know, you did get new windows. Part of that with COVID, the aluminum glass for those were on delay. Those are on site. So the windows that, say, for example, in the cafeteria, those will be scheduled for replacement. The window system for the SRO office in the front, that is, it was in delay, obviously, because of the shipment delays, but that will be installed as well. So you're still getting new windows throughout the entire school for the areas that we identified. But was it 100% the original intent what we thought we could do? No.
All right. How do we proceed, Mr. Man? Do you have a plan?
Well, I think that we've heard the architect lay out the facts here. And I think we proceed however the board is so inclined.
So I think when you get an approval.
Great answer, though.
I mean, I'm thinking myself here. I think we're getting approval on change orders six, seven, six, seven, and nine. And the question is, the big one's on number eight.
Let me ask you one more thing, Chris, about number eight.
Yes, sir.
Where are you at in that process? Where are you at with the fire alarm system? You need it tomorrow? You need it next week or three months down the road?
That is something that we're going to need pretty soon. Like I said, as a life and safety standpoint, that was something that we cannot hold up. So part of that work has been completed in that center area of phase one, which we call S1 and S2. East wing is just about complete on that as well. So the next phase is to move on to the, what we call the 95 addition or the northern swing.
Mr. Chairman, what I'd strongly recommend is, is if you just want to delay the project, we have no much choice. But I would encourage our attorney to get all the information from the architect for this engineering firm and drop them a note for the bid.
Jack, I want you to.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
This is for no other purpose than for life safety, for the kids that are there. We could not stop with school beginnings to not make everything work. We had to make everything work. So part of this work has been done, yes. But it's to get the whole school, the whole fire alarm system to current code standards, which is something that we wanted anyway. And believe you me, you, Chris, nor myself, would be here tonight asking for this if we didn't feel it was absolutely necessary.
Correct.
We don't doubt that.
I disagree with that at all.
And yet, the sticker shock is, is giving me a.
Nightmare.
Do you, in your opinion, Jack, do you think this should have been picked up initially? Or you think?
In my personal opinion, somewhere along the way, yeah.
No, I don't think, I don't think anybody up here wants to hold up the project.
No.
Not to cause any hindrance to life safety.
But over the years, a lot has been here for a long time. We see these things and we've learned to question them. You know, we just, it's not just a free, you know, because we got a contingency that we just not to spend it all.
No, absolutely. We typically.
Some people don't realize that. We just want to make sure.
No, I completely understand. I mean, as designers, we try to pride ourselves in minimizing if not having change orders on projects.
But I would recommend we ask for at least an explanation from the engineer. I think that nothing but fire. But if it was on our job, I knew it would. But if we was on our job, I knew you would, or your job either, Jim.
I agree. I'd be all over it.
But I mean, like I said, it, it piggybacks off your, your conversation, Mr. Bill. Yes, we did have that conversation. However, just quite honestly, from the conversations that we've had from NCI, we, we put Band-Aids on the system for thirty or forty years, and it just can't take more Band-Aids.
We can't help it.
I mean, I, I know we can't help it, but we can't ignore life and safety either.
We ain't ignoring nothing. We're going with what your engineer said you do.
He'd have been asked to have had a warning on this.
Sure.
A hundred grand is a, you know, when we, when you've had the conversation, if it was something brand new that we said, oh, we didn't, we uncovered it and, you know, we didn't find that.
Oh, absolutely.
We talked about it in detail, with the old system compared to the new system. Oh, yes.
Does that change the engineering?
I want to clarify the legs on, school door legs on.
Yes, sir. We had that, we had, we had that, and we were very concerned about the fire alarm and security. But there's two things there. The general stuff and, like Josh called it, the windows. I didn't know that they was welded frames, that was supporting with no header. It sure looked like it. If you just look at them, you would swear that it was. You can take the old frame out.
I could walk you on that, I could walk you on that school now. When we took out bricks at the head jam and the seal, took some pictures, stuck cameras in there. Quite honestly, when you pulled the brick out, the permiculate falls.
Yeah.
So it's-
And I did-
And even, even in the seal condition, I've got pictures I can send to you. There's, there's no solid brick. That, that brick is being held up.
By the, by the windows?
By the wire, actually.
That I understand, but I don't see no reason, you know, we can't hold up the project, but we need to know that, that this board will, when you get a hundred, I think that if, if, if our attorney thinks that's necessary, just for an explanation.
Good enough?
All right. I work for y'all, so I'm gonna do whatever I can.
We get a motion to approve this, pretty much, on the board liaisons. So go ahead, yeah.
I mean, the direction we're taking is, I imagine, to fund, send it to legal, let it get kind of tossed back and forth with legal counsel. But in the meantime, we fund. Is that what this motion is to fund it?
That's what I'm thinking.
I know the kids are suffering. I mean, I think in one wing, they don't have heating and air conditioning. Maybe they do now, but I would hate to keep delaying this process to bicker over a hundred thousand, a hundred and eleven million dollars. It's tied up in legal.
I don't think you're bad. Yeah, I think we're done.
Yeah, I know, I know.
More of a motion?
I know.
Motion, God?
Yes.
Yeah, that's your question on the air conditioning side. Shields, scheduling the change orders.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, you'll get with our attorney.
Good to see you. Be careful going down the road.
Chris, you'll get with the attorney?
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll reach out.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, Charles, we said how long it's been?
All right. I will keep us moving. I know it's break time. I'll keep us moving as we're getting close here. Scheduling the public hearing to consider amendments to county ordinance, Eric, right now. Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir. Okay, so we have a bunch, all the development ordinances in Macon County have to be brought into compliance with the new chapter of the general statutes, which is 160D. We've started that process. We hope to bring, a lawyer in my office is working on doing that. We decided that was the quickest and most economical way to, to bring that. We have a total of, how many development ordinances, Jack?
Seven.
Two days. Probably it's between twelve and fifteen that are actual development ordinances that would fall under 160D. So we're gonna try to bring three, three rewritten ordinances in front of the board every month in order to make that happen. On a development ordinance, it's required that there's a public hearing on it to be approved. The commissioners are the ones who have to request and notify that there is going to be a public hearing. So today, these three are pretty much done. When I say pretty much, the one that's not completely done is the subdivision ordinance. It's in compliance with 160D, but the planning board is still working on subdivision ordinance. And so we hope to have some rewrites from then within the next two weeks. And therefore, bring that in ready to go. So by the time we publish it for notice of hearing, I mean, for a public hearing, that will be a final version. If it's not, then that one, we'll just have to, to delay and reschedule the public hearing. But we've got the three that we think are ready to go. So that is the Chapter 159 subdivision ordinance, 152, the sign control ordinance, and Chapter 111, the sexually oriented businesses. And then next month, we hope to bring three more that will also be ready to schedule the public hearing.
Sounds good. When will we get, Eric, when will we get the amendments?
They're done, and you are welcome to see them, except for the subdivision ordinance. And I can send those out. They're redlined right now, ready for your review.
That way, we can go to them next meeting.
Correct. And then we can also have them available for the public to review and make comment on it.
And again, these are not-
We don't, oh, sorry, Dave.
These are not changes to the substance of the ordinance. They're merely bringing the ordinances in compliance with the 160D of the general statutes, which is a newly enacted statute that requires all counties to bring their ordinances dealing with land use into compliance with this statute. So the only changes made to the ordinance, any of these ordinances, are what is required by the state of North Carolina to bring it into compliance with general statute 160D.
Correct. There's no substantive changes. These are, first of all, you have to, most of those ordinances refer to the enabling statute that they were. Now that enabling statute is now combined under 160D. Most of what 160D done was administrative type of changes such that if you have an appeal or a variance or whatever it is, it doesn't go between this board, and this board, and this board. It's going to be set before one board of adjustments, and that board of adjustments will be in charge of hearing that appeal, or it's an appeal directly to Superior Court rather than it going to the watershed committee. And the watershed committee right now consists of four members as opposed to five, and like right now, there's a, there's a, there's a request for a variance before the watershed, and, well, they only have four members. So that can't be heard, but 160D is switching that all to a, to a-
But you can't follow the timeline with all this, or we got plenty of time?
We're, as far as bringing in the compliance with 160D, we're behind time. I think there is, I think that the switching of the guard possibly from the legal may have caused that to fall, well, it just didn't really happen.
But we're, it needs to be done.
Yeah. We get a motion to schedule a public hearings for our October meeting.
We'll move it.
We got a motion, Michael Commissioner Bill, Second Michael Commissioner Shields, all in favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You know, so, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification on Commissioner Young, just for the record, your motion on the Macon Middle School project included taking the one hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars from contingency for change orders six through nine.
That's right.
I think that's what we all understand.
Motion included. Okay, thank you.
All right. Item 11E, the Wildlife Resource Commission, was removed. Good work, Representative Gillespie. We're gonna replace that with the Pine Grove School Community Club. I'm gonna read a letter that we received a couple, two days ago, Derek? Yesterday.
Yesterday.
It says, "Dear Commissioners, it is with great sadness that I must inform you that the Pine Grove School Community Club, also known as Pine Grove School Restoration Society, has met and voted to disband and dissolve the organization. Due to loss and lack of membership, age, illness, and the ongoing pandemic, it is no longer feasible to continue. We have managed to maintain and function as a community club for seventeen years. We are proud of our service. However, it is now time to return the building and its care back to Macon County. We would like to return the use of the building on November first, two thousand twenty-one. It is our plan to have the electricity disconnected at that time. In the meantime, we will be removing items that were donated for the club's use or purchased by the organization. Some items will be returned to the previous owners, and others will be donated to other clubs in the Macon County or various charities. It was decided that the remaining funds, after all debts are satisfied, will be given to support several school classrooms in the county. It is our hope that the Pine Grove School will continue to be used as a polling precinct and possibly other functions as the county sees fit. The building has been winterized and will be thoroughly cleaned upon return. We would like to leave some items that can be used by other individuals if the building should be rented or used for other functions, if that is agreeable with the county. Isaac, Dills, and myself will be honored to continue to check on the building periodically to make sure it is not vandalized or damaged if the county is in agreement. It has been a pleasure and labor of love to have restored the old Pine Grove School building and use it for many memorable, memorable events for the past seventeen years. We are honored to have been of service to our community and to Macon County. Thank you for that opportunity. Sincerely, Catherine Cole."
Well, these folks have worked hard, and they've lost a lot of members, the leadership. But the restoration of that old building, many of us were involved in, had been worth it all. And, and we hate to see it dissolve, but the building's in great shape, and they've left in great shape.
I'd ask for this to be put on our agenda tonight versus just an announcement, because I think we're gonna have, we got a property that's gonna be coming back to the county, so I think we'll have to give the county manager direction if we want to continue power there. They can switch it over to the county's name or what we're gonna do with this. It's not only sort of a historical place in my mind, I remember it from a life, but it's also one of our polling precincts and how we handle that moving forward. So we'll have to decide.
I think we need, we want to certainly keep the power on, and it has a new heating system in it, so keep the power on, and if it's been winterized, of course, you'll have, you'll have voting coming up when? December?
March.
March.
What about, what about insurance?
It'll come up the county's own.
Property liability?
But it's, the building's in great shape. We redone the whole floor system, everything.
Do we want to have maintenance go by occasionally, and I guess, is it just gonna be a normal round? Is this a building the county wants to move forward with going on, or are there other entities that might be interested in it?
We would hope, Mr. Chairman, that somebody in the community, you know, they brought back the Old Salem Church, it's still active, and we would hope that a generation would pick up the mantle at some time. And that's what I think we ought to give it an opportunity.
Okay. So the county will hold on to it temporarily, and good with everybody?
Good.
I think we need to vote on it. Consensus, Derek? I think you move forward with electricity and insurance, all that. All right, thank y'all. Item 11F, Franklin High School architect.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Just to kind of rehash where we've already been, the evaluation committee that was selected to look into the architectural, to the responses for the request for architectural services at the Franklin High School, we had the evaluation committee of Tracy Talent, Todd Gibbs, Chris Baldwin, Carol Arnold, Tommy Kay, Jack Morgan, and our liaisons, Commissioner Young and Commissioner Shields. There, on August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, this committee has met and evaluated the responding. We had eight respondents, and from those, all of those architectural respondents to the request for qualifications, the committee selected LS3P Associates LTD as the most qualified firm. They received a score of ninety-three point eight eight out of a possible one hundred. And so what we would be looking for here tonight is to approve the architect, LS3P Associates LTD. Approve the architect selected by this committee and enter into fee negotiations with this architectural group, but only after this architectural group is approved by the school board. And that will be at their September twenty-seventh meeting of the school.
Really? So, correct me if I'm wrong, but were we not gonna interview the top three? I mean, there were, there were eight people submitted.
Am I wrong in saying this?
We've just received notification today from the school system that this LS3P Associates LTD, they had taken all of the committee's rankings on the sheets, and they had totaled them. And they received at ninety-three point eight eight, a high score, and so the schools had requested that we consider this. So we can, we can do it however the liaisons want to, though.
Who's the other ones involved? Who's the other architect?
Boomerang Design, Mosley Architects, Clark Nixon, Novus Architects, Kope Architecture, SGA Normal, Wright.
Where did Mosley come in at?
Mosley came in second.
Where did Novus come in?
Novus came in fifth.
Now, that, that ranking committee was all school employees?
Nope.
Josh and I. Did y'all rank?
And Jack.
And Jack, and Jack Morgan.
Jack, how did that, how did that go? Were we not gonna interview a couple of them? Am I wrong in saying that?
I brought that question up, but they, I think the scores were so, they scored too high that evidently, nobody saw the need to.
Yeah, that ninety-three point eight eight was the total of all of the evaluation committee's scores. That was the, the average score that they received. The next closest one was Mosley Architects at eighty-one point three.
We checked their records, we checked their-
It's a good one.
It's, yeah, and what's that gentleman's name?
Mike Watson.
Yeah, Mr. Watson's part of that firm.
PGA agent.
Mike Watson's part of that firm?
Yeah.
He's not part of Novus?
I don't see it. That's, that's not.
He's come out of retirement?
Apparently so.
He was pretty lovely, too.
Okay.
The health bill in that South East Medical College, they were bad off, too, there. LS3P, they did that one over there.
Where you at on this?
I think we need to interview the top three, but that's me. I mean, I just feel like we had eight people come in. I think that needs to cut it in half, and we need to interview the top three.
Absolutely.
And that's typically how business, I would imagine, works hard to turn eight to one without even speaking face to face to them.
But even in fact, if the school board chooses architect?
The school board will choose architect. That's why it needs to be in there. That's why they have, would have to approve it. Any approval we gave would have to be contingent on school board approval, but I think if our liaisons are wanting to interview these people, then that's what we need to pass back to the school.
Who would be number three?
Or you would be, LS3P Associates would be number one at ninety-three point eight eight. Mosley Architects would be number two at eighty-one point three eight. And McMillan, Paston, Smith would be number three at seventy-nine point three eight.
And we'll get for again the school liaison members.
How do you feel about that?
I'm fine with that.
Whatever y'all, the liaison committee, that's your call.
Okay.
I think, I think the top three there.
I mean, I feel like, I mean, we need at least hear a mile.
Okay.
Now, who's gonna interview?
This evaluation committee?
All right. Consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve? Most of something, somebody like to move?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second Michael Commissioner Higgins, Second Michael Commissioner Bill, all in favor.
Aye.
All right, we have appointments. I have Michael Mathis, the Watershed Review Board, for one meeting.
That must have been hard up for members.
I'd like to-
He's a good person.
Yeah, Michael, he's, of course, he works through the town of Highlands, and he's very familiar with that. So I'd be glad to nominate Michael.
Second Commissioner Higgins, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. I think we do have, do need a closed session for the purpose of potential property acquisition. Is there anything else? Any other reason? And I'm not expecting any action in property acquisition. Mr. Attorney, anything else?
I'm not bothered any. If you'd like to cite the statute of one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven on that closed session.
One forty-three dash three eighteen eleven on the closed session. We'll get a motion to go on the closed session. Motion by Commissioner Bill, Second Michael Commissioner Shields, all in favor. And again, I'm not expecting any action. No action. There will be no action. Not only not expecting any, there will be no action.
Big dog, believe.
Here goes, damn it.
All right, Jack? What was the name of the member?